Morning.
Morning.
First thing we have this morning is our call to order will be Chairwoman Barbara Acoch, our invocation by Commissioner Antonio Williams, our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Freeman Harrison, and then we'll have the approval of the minutes. Then we'll have a discussion and adjustment of the agenda, and it looks like there are two, looks like two budget amendments that are being walked on.
That's correct.
Okay, no other changes, Carol?
Yes, sir. Those are, those are.
That's it, okay. And then we'll go to special presentations. We'll do the presentation of employee anniversary pins, and then we'll have the 2023 Summer Youth Employment Program update by Ms. Kendall Horr.
Thank you.
And Nikisha Newkirk. We do have an appointment committee. Then we'll move to unfinished business, which is a motion to approve work authorization number seven for parking lot drainage improvements and work authorization for number three. Amendment number one for stormwater improvements at the Wayne Executive jet port. Both projects are being funded by state ARPA funds. Going on to the consent agenda. I mean, is there any questions on that work authorization that we need to answer now?
I don't think there's any even matching funds on that either.
No, sir, it's 100%. And then we'll go on to our disabled consent agenda for late disabled veteran exemption
Let me go back to the airport.
Okay.
This question's for Carol. Carol, did you get anything in regards to the proposal of the new road they were wanting to cut in?
Have I received anything?
Have you received anything on that?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
You haven't seen anything?
I don't know anything about that.
All right, good enough.
Your late disabled veterans exemption applications.
You what, Neil?
Are you going to show up your disabled veteran?
Yes, Miss, her computer just died. She's waiting on her computer.
They should be able to pull them up from the agenda as well.
So six, seven, and eight is late navelly disabled exemptions and your late present use value applications. They've all been certified by the tax office and are suitable to be approved. Pull up your budget amendments.
While she's doing that, I'll just tell you that they have separated them between previous fiscal year '22, '23 and current fiscal year '23, '24. This is, and Janice can further explain, but this is typically done as they're closing out the year and opening up the new year, so Kayla will bring those up.
The '22, '23.
I think the internet's slowest. Yeah, the internet's.
We need to, I don't know what's going on.
I think they did all the work in here, so this probably.
They put all the new lots in, but the network stuff, I think, is not doing the stuff.
Okay, I got mine up.
It won't cast it there? Okay.
So they have to pull it up.
So you guys are able to pull them up?
Yeah, yeah. Six sixty-five, is that the first one?
Mm-hmm.
For what I got?
Yes, sir.
That's okay.
Okay, we'll let Janice go through those.
Okay, first for fiscal year '22, '23. The first budget amendment is for the facilities department, and this is to transfer funds for the removal of the trees on Humphrey Street and the demolition of two structures on Dakota Avenue. Number six sixty-nine is for the sheriff's office, and this is to appropriate insurance proceeds for the repair of a vehicle. Number six seventy is from the Maxwell Center, and this was to transfer funds for the repairs of a chiller. So we just moved funds around in their line items. Number six seventy-one is for the Wayne County Public School Sales Tax Fund, and this is just to appropriate the over collection of half-sent sales tax monies.
This is over collection?
Yes, sir.
And we can't get a quarter cent when passed?
I can hear you.
I said, and we can't get a quarter cent when passed?
No, sir, I'm sorry. The next one, number six eighty, is for the sheriff's office, and this is to appropriate donations received. It's public donations, and we're obligating them in the sheriff's department in his Department in his special fund. The next budget amendment, number six eighty-one, is for the Sheriff's Office, and this is to appropriate controlled substance tax receipts. Number six eighty-two for the Sheriff's Office, this is to appropriate seized, um, property funds received in the amount of eighty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cent. The next one, number six eighty-three, is for the Sheriff's Department as well, and this is also insurance proceeds, um, that we've received, and we're putting it into maintenance or repairs for the repair of the vehicle. Number six eighty-six is for EMS, and this is, um... We had over collections in the user fees, and this was a result of the old EMS company that we were with when we gave notice that we were gonna leave them. They started collecting really old accounts they had on their books, and so it caused over collections, which meant we had to increase our percentage that we pay... Not increase percentage, but increase the amount that we had budgeted to pay them.
I guess forty-five thousand was beyond what we budgeted, or...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Do you want else?
I can't hear what she said.
Oh, the forty-five thousand collection fees, was that beyond what our... what we had budgeted?
Right, right, yes, ma'am. And so, which means we way over collected the the revenues.
Do you know what that, um, fee, oh, I'm sorry, here it is, five percent rate for the billing company?
The new company is, Andrew, is four percent, isn't it? The new company's four percent air methods.
But would this not also increase our collections by nine-hundred thousand dollars? So would you not need a budget amendment for the nine-hundred thousand?
Now, this is the, this is the exact amount we needed to finish paying the bills.
That's right, pay for the collection of nine-hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't need a budget amendment for the nine-hundred?
As revenue, you know? No.
Okay, that's right, you don't... Okay.
Yes, for expenditures.
It's just expenditures. Okay, thank you. And I said I wasn't asked a question. Can't help myself.
The next budget amendment's number six ninety-eight, and this is from Services on Aging, and, um, this is a correction to, uh, a duplicate, uh, budget amendment where she anticipated the donations twice, so we're just reversing that. The next budget amendment, number seven oh four, is for the Jail, um, Debt Project Fund, and this is to anticipate and appropriate the debt proceeds for the financing of a new detention center and to reimburse the general fund for advances for expenditures ahead of the debt financing. The next budget amendment's number seven oh five, and this is for the DSS Health, um, Debt Project Fund, to anticipate and appropriate the debt proceeds from the financing of a new DSS health building and to reimburse the general fund for advances for expenditures ahead of the debt financing. The next budget amendment, number seven oh six, is for the fire districts, and they are attached behind, um, and this is to true-up the fire departments, and when we actually pay them out, every penny we collect, we pay out to them. So this fixes their budgets for the over collections. The next budget amendment's number seven oh eight, and this is for FEMA, and this is to reimburse FEMA for insurance proceeds paid in error. When FEMA reimbursed us on their forms, they, they made a mathematical error, and we identified it and agreed with what they said, and so we owed them back five thousand dollars. And now we're on to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, you're gonna have to wait just a minute as we flip back now.
And Mr. Dogory.
And it's, it's slow.
They've been back a fourth.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta go back to budget amendments twenty-three, twenty-four.
I could do it with my time.
Come on.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Come on.
Take this time. Think about, may be longer than what we anticipated.
Because of the slow internet.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
I'm not.
What do I need to punch? Did I have to punch right here?
Yeah.
Wait for it.
Okay, I'm ready. Starting with number three.
Yeah.
Okay.
First budget amendment for number twenty, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is number three, and this is for the library, and the purpose of this budget amendment is to accept grant funds awarded by, I don't know what that is, but this is for the LSTA Creative Aging Project. So these are grant funds. The next budget amendment, number four, is from the library, and this is to accept grant funds for the LSTA Learning Studio. Your next budget amendment, number five, is from the Health Department, and this is to reallocate the remaining East Point grant monies that the Health Department was awarded with the given extension of September thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, opioid action plan grant, East Point. Number six, um, budget amendment's for the JCPC, and this is just obligating these pass-through funds for that juvenile crime prevention program. We receive the funds and send them right back out. Next budget amendment, number seven, is for the Health Department, and this is to allocate funds for the Agreement Addendum for Healthy Beginnings. Number twelve is for, um, the Detention Center, and this is to reappropriate the remaining funds of the third year of the COSAP grant. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Number thirteen is for Wages. This is to appropriate the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget for wages. These funds come from the HCCVG grant, and they come in and we pay them out to, um, to Wages. The next budget amendment, number twenty-nine, is for the library, and this is to reallocate, um, grant funds and add project strings. So this is just kind of an accounting process to add the project strings on to the end of the, the, um, grant. The next budget amendment is number thirty-three, and this is for the Board of Commissioners, and this is to appropriate funds for the Civic Plus Annual Fee, and this was just not included in the original budget. So we're taking these funds out of our contingency lineup. The next budget amendment and the last budget amendment is number thirty-four, and this is for the NC Courts to upfront the NC Courts program, the remaining funds needed from the AARC case coordinator contract. These funds will be reimbursed either by the North Carolina Courts program or the opioid settlement funds.
I can explain that a little bit.
I was about to ask you.
I've been working with Judge Heath and Allison on this, and since Allison is out, I told Janice I would explain it. Um, if you recall, um, two years ago, Wayne County received, um, an allocation in the state budget for, to run a drug treatment program. Those funds ran out, um, they ran out June thirtieth of this year. The state allowed, um, the program to encumber funds for future use, so as long as all the funds were encumbered by June thirtieth, they could fund positions beyond July one, even though there was no money left. There was a little bit of shortage on this contract. I believe this contract was ninety thousand, does that sound? It was somewhere in that ballpark, um, so they used all the state funds that they could in that two-year program, and what was remaining is what's in front of you, the twelve thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, and speaking with Judge Heath, they have a federal grant, um, that will be available, um, after July one, so that they can reimburse the county for these funds. They're pretty confident that that will come through and they can be used for that. There's also some discussion, just some discussion that there might be some state funds available in the upcoming budget. That's still obviously being worked out, there's not a state budget yet. So we would, um, pursue those two reimbursement options first, and then the third, we could also use a little bit of opioid settlement money if we wanted to, to reimburse ourselves. So this is just to fulfill that, that little bit, um, that's left on that contract that was unfunded. Before we can enter into that contract, we need the budget amendment because there was no money allocated. So we're just fronting that cost, and then we're gonna be reimbursed by any one of those three avenues. And this is the case coordinator that, um, you know, oversees all the cases, works with the defendants, and makes sure that they're doing everything they're supposed to, um, in accordance with the program. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving on to, um, number eleven, it's a motion to approve a petition to add Grace's Farm Road, Stuart Allen Circle, Mary Danielle's Place, Emmett and Angie's Drive, and Michael Thomas Place to the state maintenance system as requested by the NC Department of Transportation. They've attached their petition, and they're asking that these roads, that the commissioners request these roads to be added to the state maintenance system. Any questions on that? Uh, next is number twelve, a pay plan update, exemption statuses. Sarah, do you like to come up and give a briefing on that?
So this is just a request to, um, change basically the, um, staff in my department to exempt from overtime. So they've passed the FLSA Administrative Exempt, um, test, and so I'm just asking that we, um, noted, I've notified them that they've met those, those requirements, and I'd like to change that on the pay plan. It just basically removes them from, um, makes them truly salary and not, um, eligible for overtime or comp time.
Okay, number thirteen is the personnel policy, some updates to the personnel policy. I think Sarah can go over those as well.
There's quite a few of those. Um, is there...
They can see it.
They can see it. Is there any questions about anything in specific that you would like for me to go over?
Let me pull this up. I would probably go over each one of them if I would, Sarah.
Does anybody have one I can look at please? I'm sorry. That's my fault for being, being late this morning. So the first one is the personal observance leave, and that is based on what you guys have put into place, and that's just a policy that kind of spells that out, um, for everyone. There's nothing on there that I think is notable, other than, you know, it doesn't pay out, they can't transfer it over to the next year, they have to use it within the fiscal year. Volunteer background checks were recommended by our liability insurance carriers. That's not something that we currently do or is in our policy, so it's something that we need to start. I've already started the process, but we do need in the policy that when we have volunteers come on, that we will do a background check. That background check will be the exact same background check that we use for our employees.
Would that also apply to appointments to committees?
I don't think so.
No.
No, it's just people who...
Now, it might could be added, but I don't think it is now.
So what volunteers are you speaking of?
So we have volunteers at the library, um, who, you know, work with youth, um, and they are just in the building on a regular basis. Um, we have, um, Services on Aging, they use, utilize volunteers, the animal shelter utilizes volunteers, and we wanna make sure those people don't have, aren't not a liability to the county in any way.
Okay.
Um, and then number three is abuse and prevent, abuse prevention and reporting, um, and that's also recommended by liability insurance. We don't have anything in our policy that specifically spells out to our employees what they should do if they suspect that somebody that they are, um, either a supervisor of, or if, for example, um, Health Department or DSS is involved in a situation where they believe there's somebody being, um, abused or neglected. What exactly should they do to report that? And so we've put that in our policy. That basically says, you know, vulnerable persons, it describes whatever a vulnerable, vulnerable person is, and then, um, tells them what to do if they feel like there's some kind of, something that they need to, need to report.
Requires DSS and Health Department employees to do it.
Yeah. And then, um, number four is a change to tuition assistance program. So currently what we have is a reimbursement program where the employee is required to put the funds up first, then they pass the class, and then we reimburse them. Um, but it's been brought to our attention that especially now, it's really hard for people to come up with those funds upfront. Um, so I've done some research, and over the last four years, I have not had one student, one employee who has asked for these funds to fail a class and require to be paid back those funds. So what I'm proposing is that we provide those funds in advance. The funds, instead of going to the student, will go directly to the school that they are applied to. We will pay a portion, the same portion that we've always paid upfront, so it reduces the amount that the student has to come out of pocket. And then, um, at the end, they are required to let us know that they passed, so that we can make sure that they are not required to pay us back those funds. But like I said, in four years, we've not had one, one employee that has not been able to pass the courses that they've requested assistance with.
They're good record.
It is.
Would you be requiring, uh, the employee to sign some agreement to that effect?
Yes, so they do have to do an application. They have to sign, um, paperwork that states that if they don't pass the class, they have to reimburse the funds.
Okay, good enough.
What about the challenge, what about the challenge if, you know, we pay for their education, and after they got near degree, they leave?
No, they're required to stay with us for three years, or they are due reimbursement. They do to pay us back that reimbursement at a priorated amount, um, from three years from the time the last payout was conducted. So, you know, it's not a situation where they're gonna, you know, get a degree and then leave us immediately, and if they do, they're required to pay those funds back.
You hear that again, you say the last payout?
Yes, so as they're going to school, this is...
You're paying that.
Right, and so every time that we pay, make a payment to their, to their tuition, the three-year, the three years is extended.
So they can't go get a four-year, four years of schooling, and it start day one, and when they get through to school and they leave?
Yeah.
It's the last payout, and then they got three years to go.
Yeah, and I would think you might wanna consider changing that to actually when they receive the, the certificate or the diploma, uh, rather than the last payout.
I can look into that certainly.
Okay.
Might not be getting a diploma.
Right. But then we get some type of certificate of completion, I would imagine.
Well, not, to be fair, not always. Sometimes people are taking classes just to, to help them in their job. For example, an Excel class, somebody who is not good in certain softwares may take a class just for software, and then we would pay for that class.
Okay.
And they won't get a certificate for that, but they're required to be with us for three years, or we're gonna have to have them pay it back.
Okay. Goodness, you've got a lot of, uh, updates here.
I do, I've been working on this for, for a little bit. Probationary period, number five, so, um, currently right now in our policy, we have a six-month probationary period where any employee is, you know, we don't have to go through the, the steps to dismiss an employee, um, who is not a right fit. This is going to extend that probationary period to one year. What kind of brought this to light was, one, six months, I don't feel is a fair amount of time to decide whether or not an employee is going to be able to perform the duties that, you know, we need to give them enough time to, to make sure they're a good fit for that position. But two, um, DSS and Health Department also use a one-year probationary period, and I feel like to keep it fair, we'll just make it the same across the board. Number six is mere increases in performance appraisals. The only thing, only difference here is that I've updated, if you look in the third paragraph where it says the following factors will be considered, the factors that we use in our performance appraisals changed a year ago. So I just updated what those performance factors are. And then the last paragraph that says an effort to provide transparency and structure to performance reviews. Supervisors and directors may also receive, receive performance feedback from their staff. So this is called a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree performance feedback. And it provides the opportunity for staff to let us know how their directors are doing and how their supervisors are doing. So it's not just from the supervisor down providing feedback to their employees. It's the employees also providing feedback on their supervisor. So that's just an opportunity for us to have more feedback. Number seven is a change in leave sharing. So this was recommended by Drake Maynard, and it mirrors what the state does. So currently, when we do a leave share, employees are required to use their sick leave. That's not the best practice because sick leave affects retirement. So when you retire, your sick leave balance that you have left goes toward your retirement. If you've used that to voluntarily provide somebody else leave, you've affected your retirement. Instead, what we're proposing is that you use your, your vacation hours instead of your sick leave. Same program, we're just using vacation hours instead of sick leave. Any questions about that?
So if there's any vacation time that a person would have left over from taking vacation, they could use that and provide that to another employee?
That's right. Instead of using their sick leave, they would use their vacation time.
Is vacation time rolled over from one year to the next?
So you have a limit. So you can only bank two-hundred-and-forty hours? Anything above that?
Goes to sick time.
Goes to your sick time.
Goes to your sick time?
Yes.
And how does sick time affect retiring?
So for every eight hours of sick time you have, that's considered one day toward your retirement, years of service.
Toward your years of service. So if you have two thousand sick hours, that would give you another year.
And you've had some complaints from some people that have retired, thinking that because they had twenty-five years, including the sick time, that they were entitled to the county continuing to pay their insurance. It's been difficult explaining to them why they're two different things.
Okay.
So, so are we clarifying this in the future with, with our employees?
Doing the best we can. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of speculation, and, you know, sometimes it's hard to quiet down the grapevine. But, you know, we try to keep it very clear in the policy. And, you know, if they will come to our office and ask us, we'll be, be able to clarify for that, that for them. You know, but the assumptions that are made sometimes are, you know, until I know about them, I can't always correct them. But as soon as I do know about them, I do try to clarify. The last one is the leave bank. So this is completely new. This is just something that I've kind of thought of based off of some research that I did from the state and through the federal government. So they have leave bank programs. The purpose of those programs is, say you have an employee who does not qualify for FMLA, okay, because they haven't been here the amount of hours they have to be here to qualify for FMLA, or they're a new employee that's only been here three or four months, and they don't have enough leave for an emergency situation. The leave bank is going to allow employees who are separated and have those abundance of hours that we don't pay out. So when an employee gives it two weeks' notice, and they have three hundred hours, and it's the middle of the year, so it's not going to transfer over to their sick leave. We pay out their two-hundred-and-forty hours, and then there's sixty hours left over that just disappear. Those sixty hours instead would go into the leave bank. It's just a bank where we would hold those hours. Another option would be if we have an employee who is terminated. Their leave is not paid out to them when they're terminated. That leave just goes away. I would take that leave, let's say they had twenty hours of leave, or they had fifty hours of leave. I would take that and put it in a leave bank. And then, when an employee who's been here three or six months and doesn't qualify for FMLA has a severe extenuating circumstance, they can apply to the leave bank in periods of three days at a time, where they would provide information to me that says, this is my extenuating circumstance. This is why I don't have the leave to take, and this is why I need the leave. I would, you know, make sure there is documented from a physician. And then we would provide leave to them from the leave bank. So this is, you know, a request, A, for employees. We've had several, we've had, you know, human beings, things happen. They have family situations or medical situations that are beyond their control. You know, I think a three-day period of leave with no pay, which we do give them leave without pay, this just kind of provides a buffer for those people who are having to take time, or otherwise they wouldn't be paid.
You said that they may make an application. Who's going to approve the application?
That would be me. Now, it would obviously go through county management as well. I mean, I'd do the initial approval, and then I would get approval from county manager, management, so that, that, you know, everybody would know.
Okay, so county manager would have to approve as well?
Absolutely. Just like leave without pay, the exact same thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
And that's, I know it's a lot.
Good job, Sarah. These are all important items. We stay on top of our personnel policy and making changes as, as needed, so that we're, all the employees have the same message when they read the personnel policy, so thank you.
Absolutely.
And this will be a benefit too when you're hiring.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a plus for the employees.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. So I can make it effective. I can probably retro it, but I don't think, just based off of so many changes. Well, the personnel, the personal observance leave and the probationary period would retro to the first.
First of July.
The first of July. Everything else would just be?
Immediately.
Immediately. Yep.
Thank you, Sarah. Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Fourteen is a title change, just a simple title change from Finance Department from the purchasing and insurance manager to the new title of procurement specialist, since the insurance portion of that job has now been located in HR with the safety position that you approved in the budget. Are there any questions on that? Have we made any progress in regards to filling that position? Oh, we're advertising right now.
Which one is it on now?
Number fifteen.
And then under new business, number fifteen is a motion to elect a delegate and alternate delegate to, for the NCAA C annual conference. And then we will have public comments, county managers' report, board of commissioners' committee reports. Do we have anything for closed session? Nothing for closed session.
Can we have something for closed session?
We can, if you, if you have something. And then we'll adjourn.
On the delegate and alternate delegate, it may be something that you want to discuss, so that when it comes time. That's the conference coming up in August. I believe it's the third week in August. That will be in Wake County.
And I would be supportive of the chair and the vice chair.
I'm not even going to be there, so it don't matter.
I will be there. Is the chair going to move?
I guess so. Somebody's got there.
You'll be there?
I'm trying to get there.
We upstate New York drinking wine.
Come ahead, Dan.
What is the date of that?
Third weekend.
I knew you were going to ask me.
Uh, I think it is the...
It's the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. And Kayla has reservations.
Still ain't going.
Oh.
Go, yeah.
It's actually the fourth weekend. Do you have reservations for which? Okay, so we need to cancel your reservations if you are certain you're not going, because she will-
If you already told me that you weren't going when I sent out the email, I didn't reserve you a room. But for those of you that said you are going, I have a room reserved at the hotel.
I'm not sure what I replied, so.
You said you were not going.
Okay, well, good.
Y'all all went last year, had a good time.
Yeah, I got, I got a EDR meeting on the twenty-fourth. What's the, what's the date set at again?
You can cut on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of August.
I don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
Well, we'll just elect a, a delegate. How about that? Did you say that we were going into closed session, or we needed?
Yes, sir.
Is it a brief?
Very, very brief.
Very brief? Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
No motion to go in closed session?
For the purpose of talking to your lawyers to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay, all those in favor? Let me get the all-clear from you. All right.
These are not working, it's just black.
All right, call to order July eighteenth Wayne County Board Meeting. Today, we have our invocation by Commissioner Antonio Williams.
Let us bow our heads, please. Lord Father, we thank you for having each and every one of us here today, Lord God. We are so thankful to see the young people in the midst of this meeting as they are future leaders, Lord. We ask that you keep them covered, keep them safe, keep them wanting to have a will to work and to serve others. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance, Commissioner.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Crumpler, motion to approve the adjusted agenda, do you have some additions, please?
Yes, I do have two adjustments, add budget amendment number thirty-three for the Board of Commissioners and number thirty-four for finance, for the NC Courts, two-year consent agenda under budget amendments for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, we have the...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the adjusted agenda.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the adjusted agenda with budget thirty-three and thirty-four. All right, Mr. Crumpler, special presentation.
All right.
Twenty-three.
Y'all been voting out there, huh?
We'll now have our presentation of employee anniversary pins.
I'm gonna call your name, and as I do, please stand in front of the Commissioner's desk so we can take a picture at the end, if you will, please. We will start with the one-year service pins. And first, we have Donald Gregory with the Sheriff's Office. We have Lauren Seeger with the Library. Brittany Heath with Public Health Family Planning. Jonathan Settle Detention Center. Christina Anderson EMS. Skylar Tet... Oh, there she is. Thank you. Skylar Tetra with EMS. Don't think so. Jimmy Davis Detention Center. Carol Howell, Public Health Child Health. Hunter... Oh, is she... Oh, there she is. Hunter Higma with Public Health Administration. Cameron Jernigan, nine-one-one. Rodney Perry, Register of Deeds. Shelley Montana, nine-one-one. Philip Robinson, nine-one-one. James Schmidt, Sheriff's Office. Erica Hines, Public Health Maternity Care Project. Morgan Ingram, Public Health Maternity Care Project. Shelley Reese, Public Health Child Health. Charles Williams, Day Reporting. And Jerry Irazeri Detention Center. All right, we'll move on to our five-year... All right, we'll move on to our five-year recipients. Now, just stay right there, we're gonna get a picture of everybody, if you will. Thank you so much. All right, for five years, we have Rebecca Lewis EMS. And Angelica Sellers, Public Health Family Planning. And that's it for our five-year. Moving on to our ten-year recipients, Taylor Grantham with EMS. Justin Jones with IT. Matthew Way, SRO. Catherine Jones, Sheriff's Office. Holly Williams, Services on Aging. And Mr. Kendall Lee, Facility Services. That concludes our ten-year. And now, our twenty-five-year recipients. We have Teresa Blankenship with DSS, which is now HHS.
Okay, Madam Chair, we'll move on to number four, is our 2023 Summer Youth Employment
And Stephanie Howard, Public Health, the WIC program.
Program update by Ms. Kendall Har and Nikisha Newkirk.
And that concludes our service pins.
Good morning.
If you three will turn around with them and just smile at the camera, Joel will take
All these lovely faces are interns this morning, so we have to fill up all the benches.
your picture magically.
Kendall Har is here with us this morning, she's gonna talk to you guys a little bit
And one, two, three, he's got it.
about what has been going on the last few weeks. Nikisha Newkirk is also here as well, if y'all wanna come on up, talk about the program. And then we also have a couple interns that want to say some things, too.
Hey, good morning, how are y'all?
Good morning.
All right, I'm so nervous. My name is Kendall Har, I've had the pleasure of being the coordinator for the Summer Youth Employment Program this year, and it has been a wonderful experience from my side. I was tasked with interviewing about fifty applicants for this year's program and then choosing thirty-seven of them to work as interns in, across all the departments in the Wayne County Government. All of the interns that you see behind you have really impressive resumes, they are some high school students, some are duly enrolled in high school and college, they're in honor societies, they're in clubs, they're student athletes, and they all chose to spend their summer working with us and have been really driven and ambitious and excited about it. So it's been a pleasure to meet and work with all of them. For a lot of them, this was their first job, so they've had to form relationships with their supervisors, with coworkers, they had to negotiate schedules, they've had to advocate for themselves as far as eating days off or reporting that they're not gonna be in or sick, and so for a lot of them, that was a first-time experience, and they've handled it very professionally and maturely. I've had the opportunity to observe a lot of them working on these job sites, and they've gotten amazing feedback from their supervisors. I think everybody has really just appreciated them being there, their willingness to help and kinda dive in wherever they're needed, and it's just been kinda cool to see things behind the scenes and how everything works, so that's been really fun. Some of the things they've had to do as far as the program, they've had to keep track of their own work hours and submit that to me weekly, they've all done a really great job doing that. They've had to adhere to different dress codes, they've had to take on new tasks depending on the department that they're working in, and so they have handled that, like I said, very professionally. I think Wayne County Government would really benefit from having any of them as future employees, if they were to choose to do that, I think that they've learned a lot in this experience, and so I thought the best way to kind of explain that to you was had some of them speak about their experiences. So we've had three, we actually had a lot of volunteers, but I've had three that volunteered to speak to you guys today, and so I'd like to introduce Audrey Williams, this is her second year in this program, and so I'm excited to hear what she has to say, and I'll let her come up.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you've heard before, my name is Audrey Williams, and I'm a recent graduate from Spring Creek High. I've previously done this internship last year and enjoyed it last year, so I decided to do again, and I'm glad I did because I've learned many valuable lessons and enjoyed myself all the entire time, too. This year, I was put into the EMS department and learned many valuable lessons. For starters, I learned how to properly do CPR and how to properly put on a tourniquet, stuff I didn't think I really needed to know until I joined the EMS department. And as far as clinical days, I just saw how much the EMS staff helps our community and other people, whether if it's something small or life-threatening. It's very inspiring to see that they will help anyone, whether if they want it or not, and I aspire to help people like they do in the future. I want to thank you all for this wonderful opportunity and hope you continue this program so the youth in our future can have the same opportunities as we all have, including me, in the future, so they can learn just all the wonderful things in our community and county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Jamari Williams.
Good morning, Audrey. Good morning. My name is Jamari Williams, I am a senior music education major attending at Elizabeth City State University. This is my first time doing the program, I did not know about the program until this year, my mother actually told me about the program. I think it was a great program, I learned a lot, I had the pleasure of being in the planning department, I learned about land ordinances, preliminary plots, excuse me, plaques, different stuff about mobile home parks, I didn't know there was so much that went into mobile home parks, but it was very interesting. I really enjoyed the training at Wayne Community College, I think it was very helpful to the high school students and to me as well, I learned a lot, even though I am in college. It was very helpful, I do, like she said, I do hope you continue this program for more kids, to do it, I think it's very great for them and to have on in later life, thank you.
I hope that you come back to Wayne County.
And lastly, Brooklyn H.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brooklyn H., and I'm sixteen years old, I go to Wayne Early Middle College High School, and this would be my first job. This Summer Youth Employment Program has taught me so much about the workspace environment and how to work in a workspace environment. I've learned many skills such as customer service skills, organizational skills, and really just listening skills and following what needs to be done in order for everything to be successful. I've enjoyed myself a lot working at the Maxwell Center, and it's truly been a great experience for me, and I feel like you guys should continue the program because it really helps, because I never knew what it was like to work until I got into this program, and it has been a good experience and I've learned so much, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity.
Like I said, they've all done an amazing job, they've gotten amazing feedback from their supervisors, and I think they've all thoroughly enjoyed it and had good experiences. But that is all, if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
I do have one. Did they pick the programs that they were...
They got to choose their top three choices, and then I placed them where I saw best fit, I tried to put them on something they were interested in or at least chose.
What was the most interesting program that they picked to work?
A lot picked EMS, it's got a good, I mean, you tell them that they're gonna get a chance to ride on an ambulance, there's a lot that'll wanna sign up for that, so that is good. I think probably the most interesting past that would be that a lot chose the library, which I didn't expect, a lot were excited to be in the library, so that was good, too.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank y'all for stepping up and being in charge of this, and to see all these young faces out here, as had been mentioned earlier today, this is our future, you know, this board, especially me, you know, I've done about all I can do, but this is the future of Wayne County and this country and this state, I mean, I'm so proud of all of them for stepping up and seeing how county government works. Because until I become a Commissioner, I thought I had all the answers, and when I got up here, I thought I didn't have any of them. And also, I'd like to thank Commissioner Williams, because this is kinda his brainstorm, I mean, and this has been a great program, I mean, this is, you know, this is one of the biggest achievements that we've had in Wayne County.
I'd like to thank you as well, because I've learned a lot from it myself, I wish I had an opportunity like this when I was their age, and it's an excellent opportunity, and it was great to kind of see how everything behind the scenes worked, things that I had no idea about myself, so I want to thank you, too, it's been wonderful being the coordinator.
One more question, if they don't mind raising their hand, how many would like or think they might like to work in government after this program? Wow, very interesting.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
When did the program start and when's the end date?
The program started June nineteenth, June nineteenth, and the end date is July twenty-eighth.
Okay, so it's about a six-week program.
Six-week program, yes.
Right, and this is your first year in adding this up?
It is, yes, sir.
You seem like you're really enthusiastic about it.
I am.
You've done a good job.
Thank you, thank you. I couldn't have done it without them, but thank you. All right, well, thank you guys for allowing me to speak today, and like I said, I've just appreciated the opportunity, and I think this is a wonderful program for them, I know that they have learned a lot, and so thank you for adding this up.
Well, I appreciate that, but I couldn't have done it without this board. This board has supported our summer employment program, and it couldn't even be done without these young people.
Yeah.
The young people that want to work, I mean, I'm so happy to see you guys wanting to work, because nowadays, you know, there's so many things out there that deter young people from working, you know, there's this TikTok with saying, you know, where it's telling kids not to work, you know, or just quit or just leave, just continue to work, you know, if you definitely want to have something in the future, if you wanna have some money like some of these gentlemen and women on this board, they worked, and they can have, they have a great life now, most of these people on this board, so I want y'all to have a great life, and that takes hard work, and it takes not only just doing the minimum, you know, sometimes you have to say, hey, let me think outside the box, let me do a little bit extra on the job, okay? And it's okay for someone to tell you what to do, you know, that's just part of life, wherever you're at, someone's gonna always tell you what to do, while you're in college there's rules, while you're in high school there's rules, when you're in the workforce there's rules, if you get in trouble, there's rules. So I really appreciate you all, keep up the great work, stay motivated, and stay safe, okay? God bless y'all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd also want to thank Kisha.
Yes.
We go way back.
I could not have done it without her.
We've been friends a long time, and I just want to thank you for your involvement in it also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kisha.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
You suppose we could give them all a hand?
Yeah.
All righty, Madam Chair, moving along, we have our Appointment Committee.
Okay, Madam Chair, we do have appointments this morning, I'd like to make the following come to you in the form of a motion, there are multiple names on the list, so bear with me. The following motion corrects the Health and Human Services Advisory Board to comply with North Carolina's general statutes and bylaws of the HHS Advisory Board. The Appointment Committee has approved the following appointments. Dr. Philip Moy is appointed to the physician's position. Dr. Emily Pinkerton is appointed to the dentist's position. Dr. George Silver Jr. is appointed to the veterinarian's position. Nanette Newcomb is appointed to the registered nurse's position. Dr. Richard Sessions is appointed to the pharmacist's position. Mr. Parker Shepherd is appointed to the professional engineering position. Commissioner Joe C. Dotson is appointed to the county commissioner's position. Mr. Keith Spivey and Ms. Barbara Akot are appointed to the two general public positions. And Madam Chair, again, these came to you in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from the Appointment Committee.
And we'll do this because it was voted on by the Appointment Committee this morning, it's not in your agenda, so we will do that by a raise of hands. That is unanimous?
And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, moving on to unfinished business. Item number five is motion to approve work authorization number seven for parking lot drainage improvements and work authorization number three, amendment one for stormwater improvements at the Wayne Executive Jetport. Both of these projects are being funded by state ARPA funds. If there's any questions, the projects are enclosed in your agenda package, and they were previously discussed as part of when we made application for the grant funding.
Madam Chair, a move of approval.
I have a motion on the floor to approve work authorization seven and three in the Wayne Executive Jetport funded by the ARPA funds.
Yes. I'm dying to see whether or not it's forty-eight votes.
I want to see how many y'all have.
Okay, Madam Chair, we'll move on now to the consent agenda, and we ask for your approval on that, having gone over it at our eight AM agenda briefing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, all right.
Twenty-three to nothing.
We didn't make forty-eight.
Give it time.
Madam Chair, moving on now to new business, we have a motion to elect a delegate and an alternate delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. Those dates are the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of August in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Madam Chair, I move that we elect our chair as delegate and Commissioner Antonio Williams as the alternate delegate.
Okay. Any discussion? Yep. Everybody is. No discussion? And the vote is unanimous?
I have a motion on the floor to approve work authorization seven and three in the Wayne Executive Jetport funded by the ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm dying to see whether or not it's 48, folks.
Okay, Madam Chair, we'll move on now to the consent agenda, and we ask for your approval on that, having gone over it at our 8:00 AM agenda briefing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion that we approved our consent agenda.
Okay. All right.
Twenty-three to none.
We didn't make 48.
Madam Chair, moving on now to new business. We have a motion to elect a delegate and an alternate delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. Those dates are the 24th, 25th, and 26th of August. In Raleigh, North Carolina.
Madam Chair, I move that we elect our chair as delegate and Commissioner Antonio Williams as the alternate delegate.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Nobody is. No discussion.
All right, Madam Chair, we move now to our public comment section. I don't know if we have anybody to sign up. Okay, and we'll move on to County Manager's Report. I'd just like to say how impressive that program is for these kids. It goes with somebody giving you a chance at a young age and taking a risk, giving you a job to expose you to different things. And I applaud them for stepping out and taking that risk, you know? Just don't sit back, you know? Take the objective, go into a new field, learn something new. It's just very important. Somebody took that risk with me, and I think it's only normal that we pass that on. And that's how you get new employees, that's how we build professionals, you know, one day at a time. And it starts at a younger age, and the younger you can start them, the better. And I appreciate their effort in applying and participating. So that's my comments for the County Manager today.
Commissioner Williams.
I just, I want to thank the board again for the summer employment program, the second year. We didn't get a lot of press for something like that. You know, we always see press when there's negative things that's happening, but that's a positive thing. You told them about 50 kids that are working, you know, that are working in local government, and some of them may, you know, one day have a permanent job here. It's amazing. I also want to just thank, thank the departments that decided to hire some kids, because I know it's not easy. It's not easy hiring young people that never had a job or don't have the basic skills. You know, it's a lot of work, you know, and on top of the staff doing their other jobs that they do daily. So I commend all the departments that decided they were gonna take a chance on a kid. It's very valuable. It's not easy, you know? I know as an employee, employer, it's not easy. So I thank them. Thank you.
Commissioner Doherty.
I'd like to give a big shout-out to our Assistant County Manager. She's taken on a role here of the consolidation, and there's been some bumps in the road, and she's handled them just very professionally.
Yes, she is.
And so I just want to give a big shout-out to you and the great job you're doing in that endeavor. We have finally gotten a foundation permit for our DSS and Health Department. It's really been a struggle getting these permits. I would hope that we will get our actual complete building permit for the building itself here shortly. You know, we're trying to do something big for our county and bring in this building to completion. It's just now getting started, but once we complete it, there will be many years of service to the citizens of Wayne County from this building. So at any rate, hopefully we'll have a groundbreaking after we get all the permits together. Thank you so much for all your help in getting those permits finally issued. I went by there, and it's really looking good. It really is. It's just amazing, though, that there's this stand of trees that's there in the middle where it's been designated as a wetland that's going to block the view from this. So hopefully we'll work on that and have some way to actually clear the path to where we actually can see that from the highway. Thank you.
I loan you some pie, Peter.
Pie, I love it.
Commissioner Gurley.
Nine thirty-one, record time. So Janice, we want to thank you for that. I ain't gonna think of just messing with Janice for our last meeting.
Commissioner Akot.
Yes, ma'am, just a couple things. I had the pleasure Saturday of attending Mr. Woodrow Anderson's 103rd birthday party. Folks, that's, he's a piece of history. You know, we're not gonna have him much longer. Mr. Woodrow was born in 1920, served in World War II. And one of the most amazing things about him, and this was not by his choice, but he was stationed on the Escort destroyer that was moored right beside the Missouri, and he actually witnessed the signing of Japan's surrender during World War II. You know, that kind of history is gone, and his mind is still pretty sharp. I mean, but it's, that's been, you know, I've been going to his, well, kind of his 100th birthday thing, me and Commissioner Gurley went to, and I managed to make it last year. But that's been one of the highlights of me being a commissioner, is to attend something like that, because, I mean, that generation, we owe them so much, and there's just not any of them left. And also, me and Lynn was in town the other day, and we had a few minutes to kill, so we went across the street from the courthouse to the Veterans Memorial over there. And, you know, that is a beautiful facility, but it's, and I don't know whether it's the county or the city who keeps it up or whatever, but it's got to be a task for them. And please don't take this wrong, but I don't know whether it's the homeless people or just sorry people or what, but we were there late in the afternoon, and the trash and all that was laying around is just disgusting, because all of those names over there, and most of them were male. I don't know whether there's any female names that have sacrificed their life that's over there or not, but, you know, every single name over there gave their life for us to have the freedom we got today. And just to see that, some people do not respect things like that. It just, it upset me, and I'm certainly not kicking the city or the county because they probably have to clean it up every day. But that's just getting something off of my chest. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Harson.
Madam Chair, I attended alone with yourself and Commissioner Akot the sewer meeting we had last week, and I'm pleased to see that that's moving forward. And what I'm referring to is maybe regionalizing the sewer for the county. You know, we've got a lot of small towns, some big towns also that have sewer problems and sewer needs. And until we can get this under control, you know, it's stopping our abilities to try large magnificures and home developers and so on and so forth to some of these smaller municipalities. And I'm glad to see that we're working together and moving forward. It may not happen in my lifetime, but at least we're talking, and it's above ground. So sewer has come out of the dark now, hopefully. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
No comment.
Yes.
I forgot something.
All right, go right ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to send my condolences to the Reed family. They lost their mother, Dorothy Mae Reed. I was really close to her son before he had passed, and she's gonna be missed. I think so many young people had the opportunity growing up to go to their house. I know I did. I remember the house right next to the bus station that's no longer there. And I thought it was like one of the biggest houses in Goldsboro. But she's gonna be missed. Amazing lady.
She was an amazing lady.
Yeah, she was born in 1932.
Wow.
Thank you.
I would like to tag on what Commissioner Doherty's about Ginger, what a great job she's doing. It's good to go in there and be able to sit down and talk with her. She's very knowledgeable, and I enjoy our conversations with Ginger. And also, on the sewer, I'm glad that we're beginning to look at that, because that could break the county if something is not done, and the city, because it's gonna be a big project. And hopefully, we can get everybody on board to recognize what it can do to a small town. And it can break a small town because of the cost of running a sewer system. So I'm glad to see that moving. And the youth program, like everybody else, I'm very, very excited and see your hands raised, the ones that would want to work in government since this program. I didn't think to ask how many would have wanted to work in government before this program, but it was good to see that and everything. And thank you, Human Resource, and everybody that's doing everything to bring this forward and everything. It's a wonderful program. Thank you, Chip, and everybody. And so I guess if there's not anything else, we can adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.